Welcome to the City Hall. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.
To City Hall, we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. To City Hall, we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. To City Hall, we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. To City Hall, we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. To City Hall, we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. To City Hall, we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. To City Hall, we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. To City Hall, we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. To City Hall, we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. To City Hall, we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. To City Hall, we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. To City Hall, we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. To City Hall, we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. To City Hall, we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. To City Hall, we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. To City Hall, we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. To City Hall, we're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, July 22, 2005. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Colleagues, the time is just past 10:25 a.m. And we have seven members present. Still shy of a quorum, but we do expect a quorum momentarily. But this being Friday, as is customary, we have a series of special presentations and introductions to be made. I'd like to begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember LaBange.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning. We're here today to salute someone who has served our country well in many roles and served our city well as well. David Van Valkenburg, in 1979, joined the State Department in the American Foreign Services. And he's served as a consulate officer and a political officer and administrator officer in American embassies and consulates in China, India, Nicaragua, Guatemala, Mexico, Jamaica, and here in our own Los Angeles. David has been posted by the State Department as well in Washington, D.C. and is a senior visiting fellow at the Fletcher School of Law and Diplomacy. For the last four years, he serves as the regional director of the Department of State's Office of Foreign Missions here in Los Angeles. And as you all know, 90 consulates call Los Angeles their home, second only to New York City and Hong Kong as places of consulates. In such a high concentration reflects the great diversity of the city of Los Angeles. His liaison role has been involved with not only Southern California, but also in Nevada, Southern Nevada, Arizona, and Utah. He's facilitated the various issues related to consulates in our communities and diplomatic affairs and has administered programs meant to prevent, excuse me, to prevent the use of any type of possibility. I'm reading without my glasses there, so I'm gonna slow down just a bit. Meant any type of possibility of any problems that one would have as it relates to consulate issues. But David, I wanted to recognize you because you've been there all the time that I've been there in the community as someone who is involved with our sister-city program and our consulate. As a council member, has a lot of consulates in my district as well as those counselors who live in the district. I always saw you there and I saw you helping people and standing tall for the United States and the State Department. And I just wanted to thank you for your service and wish you well as you go on to Washington, D.C. And hopefully come back in some role in Los Angeles. So David, I certainly want to thank you and joining David... And joining David this morning is Alex Kirkpatrick, the Regional Director of the Office of Foreign Missions, the United States State Department. Alex, could you just say a few words behalf of the State Department?
Well, I know that we're all going to miss David here. And I look forward in my time here to maintaining and expanding the level of cooperation with the city, continuing to work with the consulates here in support of them and of America's role in the world. That's very important to all of us. Thank you very much.
Alex, I certainly appreciate that. Also Jeff Seeley, the colleague who also lives in the 4th District. Give Jeff a big hand because he helped all the time. Now give David. Since 1979, when he started his career in the Office of Foreign Missions, he's served this country well. For a few remarks, David.
Well, very soon, Los Angeles is going to pass Hong Kong and be the second-largest consular corps in the world. Several more countries have just asked for permission to open here. It requires permission of the State Department to do so. And I think the reason for all this growth from, I've seen many come during the four years I've been here and many more in the works, is because Los Angeles is the kind of city where most countries need to be represented. And this, of course, the natural qualities of the city are supplemented by the efforts of Councilman Tom Labange to bring a more international flavor to city government. And so I'd like to thank you for everything you've done to support our office. Every request we've made has been answered favorably. And when Los Angeles moves to second place, it will be your doing.
Oh, no, David. Thank you and everyone at the State Department. Appreciate it. Please give David Van Valkenburg a big hand and wish him well. Thank you, Maria. Thank you, Mr. President. We're gonna go over and take some photos right here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Ms. Perry for our next presentation.
Whatever. What's your best side? You don't want her to be alone. Come on. You'll get lonely up here. Okay. Good morning, everyone. I am very pleased to honor a special friend to our community and a senior member of the Clean and Green family. I feel like I've grown up with him and he's grown up with me and known him for so long I can't even remember how long it's been. His name is Esteban, or Steve Cardozo. And he started working with the Los Angeles Conservation Corps in January of 1989. He was hired as a Clean and Green Supervisor in June of 1990 and has worked in Council District 9 from 1991 to June 2005. I have always been impressed by his true dedication, his hard work, his patience and attention to the young people of the district. And I can tell you firsthand, because I've watched him over the years, that he is a positive role model for young people and Clean and Green members and has touched the lives of hundreds of young people in Council District 9 throughout the course of his career. He has always stood for a good, strong work ethic, a good role model to his team members. He instills teamwork, self-responsibility, and that goes a long way in helping young people mature into responsible adults. I know that firsthand because in fact, Maria Perez, who's hiding over there in the corner, is a current member of my staff and was a former Clean and Green member under Steve's leadership and training. Because of the lessons she learned from Steve, she exhibits a positive attitude on a daily basis and she is emblematic of the type of young people on Steve's team and those he's developed over the years. Now, I'm happy that he's still with Clean and Green even though he has moved on to another project area. And I know that he will be a great leader in his new post and that the people in his new area will benefit from his tremendous leadership. But I have to say, we already do miss you terribly, miss you, and would take you back in the blink of an eye. I wanted to take this opportunity to publicly thank him. He has been a gift, a blessing, an asset, and a leader in the 9th Council District. And I understand that we have one of the young people today from an L.A. Bridges project in which he's worked as well, wants to make a special presentation to him.
Good morning. My name is Pedro and I want to honor this certificate or something for appreciation to Steve. So here's, I work, I used to work for Clean and Green, but now I'm old, so I gotta keep on moving, so. And I'm from L.A. Bridges representing them, but some of them couldn't make it, so I'm representing for them. So they're from L.A. Bridges. So.
As you guys know, my name is Esteban, Steve. And first of all, thank you, Councilwoman John Perry. Appreciate what you just said. Thank you, Maria. And in behalf of all my students that have worked with me, thank you. Thank you very much for this appreciation day. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. For, at this time, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Cardinals Garcetti, Groll, Han, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Wyzein, Padilla, 10 members present on a quorum. Mr. President?
Thank you very much. Colleagues, take a pause in presentations and dispense with consent items from our agenda. Mr. Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Parks moves. Mr. Labange seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Smith moves and Mr. Carradines seconds.
On the regular agenda, items 1 through 3 are annual street lighting maintenance assessment district items. Notice for public hearing, council should close the hearings and confirm the assessments.
Members, items 1 through 3 are now before us and do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are now closed. Members, we should call any specials. Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay. Those ordinances carry over for second readings. Mr. Clerk, next items, please.
Items 4 through 24, items for which public hearings have been held. On item 4, there is a technical correction. The ordinance is just ordering the work and not levying the assessments at this time.
Okay. We'll consider item 4 as amended. Colleagues, items 4 through 24 now before us. Public hearings have been held on these items in committee. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. If there's no such motion, Mr. Rosendahl?
Item 22, I want to continue for a week.
For one week?
One week.
Okay. Any objection? Seeing none. Item 22 is continued. On the balance of items 4 through 24, colleagues, any specials?
24.
24, call special by Mr. Smith. And if there's no other requests for specials, then, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Items 4 and 5 are also ordinances and carry over for second readings. Next items, please.
Items 25 through 42 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. Without objection, items 25 through 42 are before the City Council today. Colleagues, I do have cards on items 32. We'll call that matter special to hear from members of the public. On the balance of the items, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Public hearings are open and closed. Any other specials? Items 25 through 42. Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Item 25 is an ordinance and carries over for a second reading. At this point in time, let's take a temporary recess from the regular meeting agenda. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll on the special meeting.
Cardinals Garcetti, Groll, Han, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Wyzein, Padilla, 10 members present on a quorum. Mr. President?
Thank you very much. Colleagues, the special meeting is now in session. First order of business, please.
On the special meeting agenda, items 1 through 5 are items for which public hearings have been held and personnel committee reports have been circulated on all those items.
Colleagues, any specials on items 1 through 5? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Item 6 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. Any members who should call this item special? If not, then colleagues, I do not have speaker cards on this item. Public hearing is open and closed. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved and we can send that item forthwith. At this point, we can adjourn the special meeting, return to the regular meeting, and return to presentations. Our next presentation, Mr. Carradines, are you ready? Mr. Carradines for a presentation.
This morning, it gives me great pleasure and honor to recognize a true servant of the city of Los Angeles, Damon P. Farfan. He began his career with the city of Los Angeles on September 7, 1986, and he was then promoted to Police Service Representative with LAPD on September 14, 1987, notice just about a year later. And in addition to that, on May 20, 1996, Damon was also promoted to Senior Police Service Representative. And on May 27, 1998, Damon was assigned as the Acting Assistant Officer in charge of LAPD Communications Training Unit. And on January 19, 1999, he was promoted to Senior PSR II at Communications Division as a Senior PSR II. On October 20, 2003, as the charter bus coordinator, Damon was responsible for the day-to-day operations of facilitating charter bus services to groups of seniors, youth, and disabled individuals for educational and recreational purposes in close coordination with the mayor and council, all 15 council offices, and the Department of Recreation and Park and other city agencies. Due to the recent departure of the clerical person who used to assist him in his demanding tasks, Damon was left on his own and single-handedly processed over 3,000 trips, which would equate to providing service to over 200,000 eligible Angelinos and participants. I think Damon is an excellent example of the kind of service that we provide in this city. And the only way that we can do that to our constituents is if good people like Damon put their best foot forward and give everything they can to their job. Today, we're basically commending Damon because he's recently completed his studies for a dual bachelor's degree. He did all of this work while completing his dual bachelor's degree in business management and marketing from the University of Phoenix and is enrolling in the MBA program. Having satisfied the requirements to take the next promotional exam, Damon decided to return to the police department. Effective July 25, 2005, Damon will assume his duties as the Assistant Watch Commander Communications Division, Valley Center, where he can continue to provide quality service to the citizens of the city of Los Angeles. Damon was born and raised in El Sereno, Los Angeles, and he also currently resides in West Covina, California, with his shy wife and two children, Elaine and Gabriel and Sean. Once again, it gives me great honor and pleasure to commend Damon on behalf of our city council and the mayor of Los Angeles because he exemplifies what good service is. And good service does not come from a computer. Good service does not come from a piece of brick and it doesn't come from a piece of mortar. It comes from people who have heart, capability, and ability, and who come to work every day and give it their best. Damon, congratulations. Please say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you. It's truly an honor to be recognized as a representative of a program that provides such goodwill-nature service to the community. Thank you again. It's been a great 19 years and I look forward to 19 more, going back to a police department again where I can provide really quality service. Thank you.
And I'd like to dedicate this resolution to Damon Farfan and his family for allowing him and encouraging him and supporting him to be the kind of public servant, the kind of worker who gives of himself every day. And I'm sure your family kind of had to suffer a little bit when you worked a little extra, when you didn't have to, but you did it because you wanted to. So this goes to the entire Farfan family for all of their love and commitment to their husband, to their father, and also to a man who's given of himself to this city. And we're gonna hold you to that. You said you'd be willing to stay with us another 19 years. So in 19 years, you're gonna get one that says 38 years of service. I won't be here. We have term limits. But I'm sure there's gonna be good city council members and a wonderful mayor that's gonna be saying the same thing and even more. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Carradines. Colleagues, as far as I know, that concludes presentations for today. Are there any other presentations that we haven't anticipated? If not, then let's, at this time, Mr. Clerk, go to the next item on the agenda.
Mr. President, do you wish to take public comment at this time?
Let's take public, general public comment at this time. This is an opportunity for members of the public. An introduction. Mr. Zein.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to introduce our president from the Woodland Hills Chamber of Commerce, Lois Kern Klein, who's with us today observing activities here at City Council. Welcome from Woodland Hills to City Council. And if you want to say a couple words?
I just want to say thank you. I'm very honored to be here today, spending the day with Dennis Zein and learning about all what's going on at City Hall. And it's a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zein. Welcome, Madam President. Colleagues, we do have two additional presentations. I've just been informed. Let me recognize Councilmember Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask Mr. John Williams to come up and family. Today, colleagues, we have two presentations to be made of organizations that have spent somewhere between 75 and 80 years in business in the city of L.A. And the first one is the Henrietta Beauty School, Universal College of Beauty. And currently here with us is John C. Williams, Jr., president and CEO. And we're honoring him and his family because the Henrietta Beauty School and Universal College of Beauty in Los Angeles is celebrating its 75th anniversary Sunday, July 31. It was founded by Hazel B. Williams on March 22, 1930, with the financial aid of a friend, Henrietta Kent, who the school is named after. This day serves as a grand opening of the school that was located on Central Avenue, which at that time was the mecca for black businesses and entertainment. The Henrietta Beauty School was the first school of cosmetology west of the Rocky Mountains to develop a course study specifically designed to meet the hair care needs of African-Americans. It soon became widely known as one of the best schools of cosmetology in the city of Los Angeles. It was the first cosmetology school to receive authorization from the U.S. Department of Immigration to train foreign students in the field of cosmetology. And these students came from such locations as Belize, Japan, Jamaica, Africa, Sweden, Korea, and China, all of whom successfully graduated. Its founder retired after the Watts riot in 1965 after 35 years of service. John Jr. followed in footsteps and obtained his own cosmetology and teacher's license and also invented a new product called the Large Bumper Curler. In an effort to continue her legacy, he and his spouse, Janelle, opened their own school at Manchester in Vermont, renaming it the Universal College of Beauty, where it still stands in the 8th District. Right? Okay. The Henrietta Beauty School, Universal College of Beauty, official ribbon cutting for the grand opening was performed by the late Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. John Jr. and Janelle worked tirelessly to ensure their students excel in the field of cosmetology education. And as the student body enrollment grew, they decided to open a second campus, which now resides in La Mert Park section of Los Angeles, also in the 8th District. The school retained Keith Johns as its director of the main campus located on Vermont. And Keith, Kenneth is the son of John Jr. and Janelle and the grandson of Hazel, which is now a complete family. is now a complete family affair. Campus III was opened in Charlotte, North Carolina, in 1988, not only with the help of John Jr., but to manage the school in Los Angeles, but also monitor the operation on the Charlotte campus until her death during a visit in February 1993, in which she and her son Chip were tragically killed in an automobile accident. The family was devastated, but in keeping with Mama Williams's dream and also Janelle's dream, they kept the family-owned business alive and operating, and now brought in another generation of Belinda and other family members to run the La Mert campus. They continued to grow, and certainly in Campus Number Four was opened by our CEO and awarded a contract in the Compton Community College in 1997. This family has moved forward and provided service to the unique service to this community, and today we're honoring John Williams and his family for 75 years of outstanding business service, most of which has been in the City of Los Angeles, but certainly has helped young people learn a very unique craft of cosmetology all through this region. And I'd like to ask John to come up and honor him today as the City Council, along with the mayor and all elected officials in this city, want to honor his 75th year in business and to say thank you for not only staying in the City of Los Angeles but providing a well-needed service. So, John, I'd like to give you this at this time.
Let me recognize Mr. Rosenthal to say a few words.
I want to say a couple of things to you. First, congratulations. Secondly, the Weller Corporation, which did a lot of cosmetic stuff. My father helped create that company back in Englewood, New Jersey. My father has now passed on to the good Lord, and I can remember him telling me about going to your place and other places and bringing his product. And the third thing I want to say is you told me you're 80 years old, and I'm 60, so I look forward to having 20 more years like you have had and making a difference in community. Congratulations, John Jr.
Thank you. First of all, I'm humbled to be here before you this morning, to receive this honor not only for myself but my family, my friends, all the customers and patrons that have passed through our doors, all the graduates who have graduated who are now becoming independent entrepreneurs. And I want to stress one very important point here. My mother started this school in 1930. I want you to imagine how it was going into business as a Black woman in 1930. Think about it. Wasn't easy. So I commend her for her fortitude and aggressiveness to start something that nobody else had done. I want to thank my councilman for being at my right-hand side every time I needed him. He was in my wedding. His wife introduced my wife to me, so I got a lot to thank them for. But I want you to realize one very important thing here. 75 years in business and still in business. That, to me, is tremendous. I don't know how many of you know of anybody, black, white, yellow, green, who have been in business for 75 years in a successfully operated business, teaching people to become independent entrepreneurs. This is what I refer to my students as, independent entrepreneurs. It's a great gracious feeling when a student walks up to you after graduating and says, "Oh, Mr. Williams, I had my first $1,000 week after receiving a county check all that life." That, to me, makes them independent entrepreneurs. Not only that, Bernard's granddaughter, who left our plane at an early age, was one of my graduates, Lori. For her, we are continuing this. For those who come behind us, we're continuing this. I would like to thank all of my staff members, my son, my, 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 his, my daughter-in-law, where I'm looking for? My daughter, my wife, all of my, my students and staff. Stand up. In fact, come on over here. I'm taking time because I probably won't get this chance again, not at 80, but you've got hope. You've got hope. I just want to say thank you again for this opportunity and this privilege and this pleasure of standing here before you to say thank you for the City of Los Angeles for that opportunity. Thank you. Thank you, Bernard.
Thank you. We'll see you in the back. We're going to take some photos.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Our second presentation is another company that's been with us for 80 years in the City of Los Angeles. Also, they started on Central Avenue, and we'd like to ask Mr. Larkin Teasley, the Chairman, President, CEO of Golden State Mutual Life Insurance. I understand we also have the Corporate Secretary, Artemis Wimsat, also the Vice President, Charles James, Vice President of Agents, Director, Midora Titlin, and also the Vice President, Insurance Administration, Frederick Wadebia. Is that right? Wadebia. I got one out. Very good. Shocked myself. But many of you, if you're not familiar with South Los Angeles, the cornerstone of this business is a very remarkable facility on Adams and Western, a place in which, as I grew up in the City of Los Angeles, was a landmark and still is a landmark. And when we think about Golden State Mutual Life Insurance Company, that started its business July 24th, that would be 1925. It was founded by William Nickerson in 1925, a company which is the largest Black-owned insurance companies in the United States, located, headquartered in the City of Los Angeles. They're a leading provider of life insurance, final expense coverage, annuities, retirement income, and market protection services and products, of other products. The company was first located and headquartered in a cubicle-sized office on Central Avenue in Los Angeles under the name of Golden State Guaranteed Fund Insurance Company. They paid their first debt, death claim, established their first branch office, and moved into their home office facility at the end of 1925. Their home office, located at 1999 West Adams Boulevard in the 8th District, has licensed in 14 states and the District of Columbia. Golden State Mutual Life Insurance Company is located in Charlotte, Chicago, Detroit, Houston, Texas, Oakland Rock Mount, North Carolina, Sacramento, San Bernardino, San Diego, to name just a few. And they've recently opened another office at the 5141 South Crenshaw Boulevard. In addition to its traditional products and services, they also offered investment services and financial planning through a subsidiary, Golden State Mutual Securities. Golden State Mutual Security is an excellent, low-cost, long-term economic plan that will provide the financial return for retirement, vacations, education, and offers the securities to families nationwide. Its seasoned brokers and planners are helping families develop sound financial plans and amass wealth by investing in mutual funds and variable annuities and by protecting the wealth through variable universal life. Golden State Mutual Life Insurance Company California Home Office offers rates for commercial lending on apartments, churches, offices, retail business, with a maximum loan of approximately $750,000, but will also lend up to 65% of the loan value. They were recently listed as a June 2005 issue of Black Enterprise as one of top 100 businesses, and they have the African, an African-American art collection, which includes the work of some of the most renowned African-American artists in the 20th century. Golden State Mutual Life Insurance is a progressive company who's offering, offers living products with the future in mind, and its mission is to help people provide funds for life's major events such as health, education, retirement, and the final expense. We've asked the management staff and the CEO here today to honor them as another cornerstone for 80 years of service to the City of Los Angeles, but also through great other regions of this country. Thank you very much for being here. I don't want you to mess up your photo on TV. Come on up here. We're going to have you on TV.
Good morning, Councilman Parks and members of the council. We indeed are very proud of the fact that we have served the citizens of the City of Los Angeles for 80 years, and most of all, we're very proud of the fact that we have issued in excess of a quarter of a million contracts to people, and we have kept every single promise included in that quarter of a million contracts. For many, many people, the Golden State Mutual Life Insurance Company contract has been the only source of funds available to the family of the deceased, so we're very proud of that. And we wish to thank you, Councilman Parks, and all the members of the council for this recognition and proclamation. Thank you.
In fact, colleagues, I forgot to mention one thing. Before my father worked for over 40 years for the City of Los Angeles, one of his first jobs was the Golden State Insurance, but he could not handle that day-to-day task of walking through the neighborhood and selling insurance, so he got a city job with benefits and a variety of other things. But thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Parks, and colleagues. Before returning to items called special, I believe Ms. Perry has an introduction.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I believe in the audience, we have representatives of the Microsoft Professional Development Conference. Are they still here? Microsoft? Well, at any rate, I'll just make this quick announcement that Microsoft is coming to the Los Angeles Convention Center on September 13th, and this convention will bring thousands of visitors to Los Angeles as Microsoft introduces its groundbreaking technologies. And this is a very significant event because it is a repeat or a returning event to the Convention Center, and not only will this event bring millions of dollars of revenue into the city, it's another opportunity for Los Angeles to show its best face through a world-class organization like Microsoft, and I hope you'll all join me today in welcoming them, and you'll see their banners going up throughout the city. We also had a visit this morning from Ilsa Metcek, who's the Executive Director of the California Fashion Association on behalf of the California Fashion Foundation, who's left a deck of cards representing the various companies in the fashion district that are represented. I hope you take a look at that and understand what an important industry this is to the City of Los Angeles, as well as a magazine talking about Los Angeles Fashion Week, which took place this past March 2005, and all the incredible designers that are already here. Thank you very much.
Mr. Cardenas?
I just want to respectfully let the Angelinos know why I'm not wearing my jacket. It's not a sign of disrespect because, as you can see, most everybody in this room, who's working in this room, has their jacket, but I wanted to be consistent with an announcement that the mayor, Vierregosa, and myself said, made outside of the Department of Water and Power earlier, to ask Angelinos to conserve energy, maybe turn up the thermostat to a higher temperature, because the rest of California and the western United States needs our energy, and we need to be able to make it available to them, if we can, and we did that yesterday to prevent blackouts. So, no, no shorts, Mr. Smith. I'm not asking people to wear shorts. But bottom line, I just wanted to be consistent with my statement, not trying to create any burdens on anyone else, but hopefully, Mr. President, that is acceptable, at least on this occasion, with your rules and regulations of this House. So please bear with me so I can be consistent with what I asked of the rest of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Before continuing with announcements for this morning, let's dispense with the two items called special before us. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Item 24 was called special by Councilmember Smith.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. My questions have been answered, so I urge your support.
Okay. Makes it easy. Unless there's anybody else wishing to speak on item 24, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay. That is approved. Colleagues, I believe the amending motion on item 20 didn't come in before we acted on item 20 on the consent calendar. Let's open the roll and reconsideration of item 20.
Yeah, okay.
Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
20 is back before us. Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is just an amending motion to make a technical correction on a street widening issue. It's non-controversial. So I ask for an eye vote.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Any other speakers on item 20? Mr. Labange?
Say hello.
Hello. Let's open the roll. On item 20 as amended, let's close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay. And I know, Mr. Clerk, let's, at this point in time, go to general public comments, an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. And the council will call forward first our delegation from the South Central Farmers, Maria Cruz, Marta Chavez, Manuel Benavides, Alberto Tatoa, Juana Benavides, Javier Benavides, Rafael Martinez Diaz, Eliezar Lopez, Seferino Hurtado, Javier Garcia, Cristopal Bravo, Theo Delgado, Rafael Delgado, Alberto Rodriguez, Maria Delgado, Bonifacio Reyes, and Jesús Panagua.
Si, buenos dias. Mi nombre es Maria Cruz, y venimos para explicarle los motivos en que queremos el terreno que siga con nosotros.
Good morning. My name is Maria Cruz. We're here to explain to you the reason why we want this territory, this property, to still be with us or stay in our hands.
Que ahí traíamos los motivos para los niños a distraer, a que se diviertan, a que ayuden allí a cosechar las verduras que cosechamos y sembrar, y ellos quieren seguir allí. Necesitamos que nos den, que sigamos cosechando las verduras frescas para ellos que son productos.
One of the motives is the children. They have fun there. They distract themselves there. They help farm the vegetables. They help cultivate the vegetables. They want to stay there. They help cultivate and farm fresh vegetables for all of us.
Que ahí sacamos los productos frescos para que ellos se alimenten y para...
The produce there is fresh, and it's very nutritional.
Okay, es todo lo que les quiero decir. Gracias.
Thank you for your attention. That's all I have to say.
Muy buenos dias. Mi nombre es Marta Chavez, y la razón que estamos aquí, el grupo, es porque quisiera de favor que pusieran un poquito más atención de nosotros, que nosotros estamos en las parcelas sembrando cosas naturales.
Good morning. My name is Marta Chavez, and the reason why I'm here is because I respectfully ask for your attention. Do please pay more attention to us that are farming the parcels.
También quisiera de favor que en esas parcelas sembramos cosas naturales para las personas y los niños en el futuro que regresen.
We cultivate in those parcels natural vegetation for the children that are there, the family that are there, and also other people that keep us company.
Y también por favor quisiera que nos dejaran allí estar siguiendo sembrando para los adultos, niños, y ancianos que seguimos sembrando de cada, en veces, nos quedamos de las parcelas de tres a cuatro horas todos los días, y no hay ni un día que nos quedemos sin estar presentes en esas parcelas. Muchas gracias.
We continue cultivating at those parcels for the adults, for children, for senior citizens. Not a day goes by that we do not spend at least three to four hours a day farming and cultivating there for all the children, adults, and for the seniors. So please, as a favor, we ask you to allow us to continue cultivating and farming at those parcels. Thank you for your attention.
Hi, my name is Manoben Aviles. My dad, and my dad has a space in the garden. I want it to stay because it's a safe place, and I like there. I like to plant things. I like to plant things and see them grow, and it's fun. Thank you.
Good morning, city council members. My name is Alberto Clautoa. Current is Los Angeles college student. For over 13 years, these families have been cultivating the parcels in 31st and Alameda. They are citizens who have become self-reliant and don't depend on government agencies for food. They naturally grow their fresh fruits and vegetables on a daily basis. They're not only providing a positive environment for our community, but sharing their surplus with other families at a low, very low cost. South Central Farmers are creating environments that are positive for our community. These children represent our future. Our youth is here to say and exclaim and shout to all of you, city council members, that this place is a necessity for our community. It's a safe environment. It's a place of education because children learn their culture, attempt to preserve their culture, and feel safe in that environment that the South Central Farmers have created. And let me remind you, to everybody who's here in general, everybody consumes the labor of many farmers, and these farmers are just trying to feed their families. That is all they want to do: feed their families. South Central Farmers believe that if our youth is exposed to positive environments, they will grow up to become productive members of society.
Thank you very much.
South Central Farmers, y aquí estamos, y no los vamos.
Thank you very much. This concludes general public comment for today's meeting. We're still waiting for Mr. Parks to rejoin us. But anything other than item 32 still on the desk? Mr. Clerk?
Item 32 is the only thing remaining.
Okay. Can we do housekeeping for a minute?
Council has motions for posting or referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There is an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Padi, a request to be excused on Tuesday, October 18th, for city business, that meets council policy.
Okay. That excuse is granted.
And that would clear the desk for item 32.
Okay. Well, let's come back to item 32, an item held on the desk to hear from members of the public who are here. Folks, I'm going to read the names of people who have submitted speaker cards, and I'd ask that you form a line behind the podium. As you come to the microphone to speak, I'd ask that you please introduce yourself. And we do have a number of speaker cards here. So time is of the essence. We want to give everybody an opportunity to speak. So after about a minute or two, I'll sort of give you a warning and to please wrap up and allow people behind you waiting to speak to have their opportunity as well. Please come forward Lori Jean, Rabbi Lisa Edwards, Jasmine Koenig, Najee Ali, Roland Hayes Lawrence, Lisa Powell, and Thomas Coleman.
Good morning, Mr. President and members of the council. My name is Jasmine Koenig, and I'm an active resident of the city of Los Angeles, living in Council District Number 10. I'm also a Black lesbian. I want to begin by thanking the city council for voting in support of AB-19, the Religious Freedom in Civil Marriage Protection Act, which would provide equal benefits for same-sex couples. I'm here today representing not only progressive-minded Los Angelinos, but over 6,000 African-American lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender persons who are also taxpayers to the city of Los Angeles. Marriage is a union created and recognized by God. Homosexuality is an abomination as far as God is concerned. These are the words from a man that the city of Los Angeles is naming a square after. Fred Price and ministers like him who preach hatred of gays and lesbians that look like me to my family, friends, and community are not worthy of such an honor. It's because of people like Price that three-year-old Ronnie Perez didn't make it to his fourth birthday because his father beat him to death because he thought he was a sissy. As a symbolic gesture to the LGBT community of Los Angeles and its sister cities and progressive Los Angelinos, please do not use my dollars to honor a man who doesn't even consider me as human. I hold in my hand a copy of the Black Same-Sex Households in the United States of America report from the 2000 Census, co-authored by the National Black Justice Coalition, the only Black gay civil rights group in America of which I sit on the board of. Los Angeles's African-American LGBT community makes up 4.1% of all Black gays in this country. Gay men, lesbians, bisexual, and transgender people are integral members of our community, and we deserve to not have our dollars used against us. The silence, isolation, and marginalization of the past cannot be overcome by mere inclusive rhetoric. It must be affirmed through action. I implore you to take the steps necessary to begin to repair the damage done by years of neglect, hatred, and disregard at the hands of people like Fred Price. I want to close by saying thank you to Councilmember Rosenthal for supporting us and helping us in getting here today. Thank you very much. I want to say thank you to my colleagues who are behind me and for those who couldn't be here today. Thank you.
My name is Najee Ali. I'm the director of Project Islamic Hope, a civil rights organization, and I'm here in support of my sister Jasmine, who just spoke, who's also my friend, my colleague, and my comrade. As a human rights activist, I'm against this proposal. I don't feel the city of Los Angeles should support this motion just based on the intolerance and the statements that Reverend Price has made over the years. And why should we support someone who fans the flames of hate and intolerance? And I know firsthand personally someone who is a Muslim. He's attacked Muslims over the years and has demonized us. So I think we need to be real careful in supporting these types of motions. I'm here to say officially, I'm opposing it. And as a taxpayer in their district, why are we... Fred Price is a millionaire pastor who owns a Rolls Royce, a jet plane, and he's a millionaire. So as a taxpayer, I'm opposing this. Thank you.
I'm Lisa Powell, co-founder and executive director of YALOA, United Lesbians of African Heritage, a grassroots, community-based, Black lesbian organization right here in Los Angeles. If you just take one moment and think about whether a notorious misogynist or an acknowledged racist, or perhaps a noted anti-Semite would be so honored with a public square in the city of Los Angeles, how would your family, how would you, how would your constituents feel about that? Probably the same way tens of thousands of Los Angeles lesbian and gays feel about Dr. Frederick K.C. Price being honored by the city of Los Angeles. I can say, over the course of 20 years of Black lesbian activism, there is no other single issue that has caused more pain and heartache to countless lesbians and gays. No other issue than religious-based intolerance. We hear stories every single week of women of all ages. A 70-year-old recently told me that now that she was retired, now that they couldn't take anything from her, she could finally be herself. She was so afraid to live her authentic life during most of her life. Why? Because she was afraid of loss: loss of family, loss of connection, loss of church. And that's based upon people like Fred Price, who foment division with their words from the pulpit. So it's really very simple. It's not fancy at all. This august body represents all of Los Angeles, the inspirations, the hopes of all of us. And we would like you to stand with us and say, you know what? This city represents dignity and equality for all. And that's certainly common ground that we can all agree on. So on behalf of all the Black lesbians and gays in Los Angeles and YALOA, we ask you to stand with us for equality and vote against this proposition. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Lori Jean, and I'm the CEO of the Los Angeles Gay and Lesbian Center. There should be no place in Los Angeles for the dedication of public property in honor of bigots like Dr. Fred Price or for the subsidization of such dedications. By now, I'm sure you know of his shameful record, even if you did not know of this before. Dr. Price has become an anti-gay zealot, aligning himself with the likes of Lou Sheldon, promoting discrimination against gay and lesbian people. He has become increasingly militant and extreme in these pursuits, assuming a leadership role locally and nationally in trying to deprive gay and lesbian people of our civil rights and to exclude us from American society. This is wrong. Dr. Price calls us an abomination. The true abomination is that parents who are influenced by anti-gay bigots like Dr. Price are throwing out their own children to live on our streets where they find despair, poverty, drugs, disease, and death. The L.A. Gay and Lesbian Center is trying to heal the young lives that have been shattered by this kind of religious political extremism. Dr. Price's repugnant views are contrary to principles of equity and fairness. But more than that, they are contrary to the law of the land in the state of California and the city and county of Los Angeles, which prohibit discrimination against gay and lesbian people and grant us domestic partnership rights and benefits. Don't get me wrong. Dr. Price is entitled to his opinion, but he is not entitled to special recognition or special treatment by our city. This includes waiving the standard fees for dedication of such property. To do so would amount to our city subsidizing anti-gay bigotry, bigotry that is both wrong and completely against the public policy of Los Angeles. Today, it's more important than ever before to have a united Los Angeles, not a divided Los Angeles. Dr. Price is horribly divisive, and the city has no business using taxpayer dollars to subsidize efforts to laud him. For these reasons, I join my friends and colleagues in imploring you to stand against bigotry and vote against the measure before you.
I would like to encourage this council to become more progressive. This is Los Angeles, the leader of, one of the leaders of the free world here. I wonder how many Black youth, many who are in gangs, participate in genocide against their own people because we have people like Dr. Price and others like him who demonize and promote hell against someone because they're gay. We lose a lot of youth because we have leaders like Dr. Price saying that you are going to hell because you are gay. Who on this council can really promote someone like that? It's one thing to have an opinion on something, but to publicly denounce people based on their sexual preference is absolutely unacceptable. This council needs to become progressive. In fact, someone on this council needs to rescind the naming of this street for this man. What a humble man he's not. He wants a street. Now he wants the taxpayers to pay for this, what, the $1,000 fee? Come on, Rosenthal, our new council person here. Stop it. Stop it.
My name is Lisa Edwards, and for the past decade, I've been the rabbi of Congregation Beit Chaim Chadashim in Los Angeles at 6,000 West Pico Boulevard. I also teach classes at USC in the Jewish Studies Department and at Hebrew Union College Jewish Institute of Religion, the rabbinical school of the Reform Movement of Judaism. As a religious person and as a person of faith, I am here to ask you once again to demonstrate your support of equal rights, this time by denying the use of city funds to help honor someone who uses religion to divide families, to promote discriminatory legislation, to preach prejudice. Now, as always, we need to encourage caring and unity in our city. If we are going to use city resources to honor people, let's honor people who speak out to make neighbors not into enemies but into friends. Let's honor people who work not to tear families apart but to build them up. Let's honor people who reach out their hands not to push others away but to embrace them. Thank you all for all your good works and good intentions and for your consideration in this manner.
My name is Tom Coleman-Venice, and I thank you for letting me speak this morning. I'm here because I actually used to watch Dr. Price quite regularly on television years ago. I thought he had a lot of common sense. He had a very diverse congregation. And then about 10 or 15 years ago, he launched into a whole series of televised sermons attacking people like me and like the people who've spoken here this morning. And quite frankly, he just lost me at that point. And now, 10 or 15 years later, I can't say I really understand this hostility anymore now than I did then. But I do understand that for more than 25 years, the city of Los Angeles has had laws against this sort of hostility and this sort of discrimination on its books. And I also understand that in many departments, the culture of hostility, harassment, discrimination, and retaliation continues. I think the city can ill afford to continue to engage in political tap dances and engage in mixed messages while the city continues to sustain lawsuits for discrimination, while judges continue to determine that the city has engaged in the discrimination, and while the city continues, quite frankly, to pay millions of dollars in settlements and verdicts that could have easily been avoided had the city been more consistent in the way it deals with its gay and lesbian citizens. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. This concludes public comment on item 32. Turning now to council discussion, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to ask that, so that we don't continue this, is to have the removal of the waiver and so that we can ensure that the event is going to go on, but that the waiver of city funds will be removed from the request.
Without objection, Mr. Rosenthal?
I'll second that motion, but I'd like to speak on the subject, Mr. President. First, I want to thank Jasmine Koenig, who is part of the Board of Directors of the L.A. Black LGBT Pride National Black Justice Coalition, for bringing this to my attention. I signed the second for a motion as a routine measure for a public event. You brought it to my attention, what the public event was all about, and I want to thank you for doing that for me. Secondly, I would like to say to my colleagues, last week, we approved the civil rights of gay people, and I applaud you for doing that. You all made this decision in May to name this plaque after the street after the Reverend. And frankly, I agree with my brothers and sisters who spoke about him. Mr. President, if I could, I would like to ask the Human Relations Commission to come up for a second and suspend my time. Thank you.
Mr. President, a conversation with your newest council member. Questions were raised in terms of the work that we're doing functioning as a conduit to and from the gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender community for the city as a whole, but especially for you as members of the council. And the reason that I've come here with Victoria Manata is to share with you some information in terms of the nature of the contacts. As some of you know, oftentimes, we're asked by the CLA's office to make comment on pending legislation. And what's especially in mind are really the high watermarks that we set in terms of our own work, raising such questions as, is the pending legislation calling for equality? Is the pending legislation nondiscriminatory? Will the legislation that is pending provide the means by which we can move forward on the mandate, which is not only that of the Human Relations Commission, but really the city of Los Angeles? And oftentimes, you receive messages from the CLA indicating the positions that we've taken, either in favor of or in opposition to certain legislation which is pending either in council or the state legislature or the U.S. Congress. in council or the state legislature or the U.S. Congress. But particularly, we want to share with you this morning the contacts that we have with the gay community, not only to indicate what we're doing, but to make an offer to you that if, in fact, questions do come up, there is certainly a willingness on our part to do our analysis and research and respond to you with some information similar to what we do with the CLA. Victoria?
Thank you. I was asked by Rabbi Freling to put together a small compendium of what-
Tell us your name, please.
I'm sorry, Victoria Manetta. We reach out to the LGBT community by attending and hosting forums, meetings, trainings, and building personal relationships with various people in the community. We recently co-sponsored a conference for teaching diversity along with the Gay, Lesbian, Straight Education Network, GLISSON, and the United Teachers of Los Angeles. We're working with the Gay and Lesbian Caucus of the Neighborhood Councils, working on ways to partner in promoting gay-straight alliances within the high schools of LAUSD. We work with Project 10, which is the LGBT arm of the LAUSD. We've helped the transgender community on issues of discrimination at local homeless shelters. We partner with the LAPD Sheriff's Department and the transgender community to produce and distribute flyers on what to do if you get stopped by the police and what your rights and responsibilities are. We design curriculum for the fire department, specifically addressing issues of homophobia in the department. We work with a cadre of LAPD and school police on hate crimes reporting, specific to the LGBT community in the schools. We have a relationship with the city of West Hollywood and share information on keeping the community safe and informed about criminals targeting the LGBT community. We act as a facilitator when there are community disputes, and for just a quick example, when Gwen Araha was murdered, the LA Times referred to her as a "he," and that upset the transgender community, so we brokered meetings where the two could air their differences, the Times and the transgender community. We work closely with the following organizations: the Anti-Violence Project of the Gay and Lesbian Center, Bianna Starr, the Gay-Straight Alliance Network, ACLU, the West Hollywood Transgender Task Force, Queer Youth of Color, Marriage Equality California, PFLAG, GLAD, Lambda, Children's Hospital, Female and Male Alliance, and many others.
My last comment, sir. Although I wasn't asked to speak on the motion that came before council, it should be noted that when AB-19 was first drafted in Sacramento, we analyzed that motion and spoke in favor of it, simply because it calls for equality and civility, providing same-sex unions to have the same rights that are those of all people in California. So speaking not only as the executive director of the Human Relations Commission, but also speaking as a member of the clergy, who was among the first to sanctify such relationships, I join my colleagues in commending you and all the members of the council in taking the action which you took last week.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted my colleagues to know, and the city to know, and the viewers who watch this on television and listen to it on the radio, that the city of Los Angeles has a proactive relationship on the issue, and we've just heard firsthand from the commission what it does. In concluding my remarks, I just again want to restate that homosexuality is not a preference, it is not a choice, it's an orientation. Our nature, like all nature, is an expression of God's will, and God makes no mistakes. Secondly, I'd like to make it clear that when a religious leader condemns us as people, it forces us deeper into the closet, and into that closet so goes all kinds of other self-loathing, self-destructive behavior. Presently, the greatest rise of AIDS is in the communities of people of color. In part, that has to do with the lack of the ability to be open about who one is and not to share that with loved ones and partners and families. And if we ever want to really deal with the reality of diseases, we need to be straight and clean and honest about who we all are as people and accept each other as equals within the human condition. It's a basic civil rights and moral reality. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate very much Mr. Rosendahl and Mr. Parks's statements and views on the issues and sensitivities that are before us. I'm not going to address them, I just want to say that, colleagues, we have, hopefully coming back to us soon, if not to Mr. Parks's committee soon, this issue of the special events policy. And I don't want to talk to the issue that's directly before us today, but a lot of us have been very frustrated over the years at the lack of having a special events policy in this city, and so sometimes, things go through and there's no rhyme or reason to them. We need to get a handle on having a special events policy so that we can avoid situations like this, hopefully, in the future, and also, just as significantly, so we can get a hold on the amount of money that the city is spending and waiving, right and left, willy-nilly, for events throughout this city on a yearly basis that totals into the millions and millions and millions of dollars. That, hopefully, will be coming back soon. This issue should just flag for all of us, the fact that we're having this debate today should just flag for all of us how important it is to, once and for all, get a hold on that other public policy issue.
Mr. Zein.
Thank you, Mr. President. Oftentimes, when we do a special events motion, it goes through without any question, concern, or controversy, and obviously, this has raised concern and controversy. I know the intention wasn't to do that, but obviously, that has taken place. I support my colleague, Mr. Rosendahl, and also all people. We are a city, as Tom Labonge knows, of diversity, of great interest, and I don't think it's tolerance, I think it's acceptance, acceptance of our fellow human being, acceptance in this country of one flag, for one people, the people of humanity. So, thank you for coming down this morning, thank you for your testimony, and Bill, thank you for your insight into this, and I will go along with the amending motion or whatever Mr. Parks is doing. I don't know if it's amending or amending the motion, support that. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Zein. Other members wishing to speak? If not, then what's before us is the matter as amended by Mr. Parks. I don't think there's an objection to that amendment. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next item, please.
The desk is clear.
Okay. Colleagues, it's the end of our agenda. Do we have any announcements today? Mr. Labonge.
Yes, tomorrow, the Los Angeles City Fire Department and Battalion 6, which is in the San Pedro area, will have their memorial torch run, which will start at 8 o'clock in the morning, I believe, visit Omar in Gage, and also, combined with Harbor Division's fun run there, so the Los Angeles City Fire Department and the Los Angeles Police Department will be there to celebrate this and help raise money for the memorial for the Los Angeles City Fire Department at Fire Station 27, Old 27th on Cowenga. Everybody's invited, it's 8 a.m., go down to Gaffey, excuse me, not Gage, Gaffey. And at the end of Gaffey, there'll be a great start and a great show, and I believe our mayor, Mr. Villarosa, will be there, and I'll be there as well, and thank you. Bringing great greetings from our councilwoman, Janice Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Colleagues, other announcements? Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much, Council President Padilla, and I apologize for taking time earlier to talk about the energy crisis that's going on and how Los Angeles can help not only Los Angeles, but the surrounding community. Please make no mistake about it, it's a life and death issue. When the rest of the state, and let me remind Angelenos, we're not having threats of blackouts here in the city of Los Angeles, but outside the city, there are threats of blackouts. The level of alert in the state of California is high right now on many levels, but yesterday, the city of Los Angeles sold energy to the rest of California and the rest of the west of the United States, and this isn't just something that's a small issue. When you have a blackout, somebody, say, on a machine to help sustain their life or something, if that machine goes off, they could lose their life, and those are the kinds of things that happen. So it's us as Angelenos, just doing simple things, like being willing to, say, set our thermostat to 78 degrees, instead of washing your clothes in the middle of the day, do it in the evening when there's less demand on energy. One suggestion that I made earlier was, like, to your stay-at-home dads, maybe your spouse is telling you, why don't you spend less time sitting on the couch and get the work done around the house? You can actually say something like this, or do something like this, and have some fun with it, and maybe win some kudos from your partner. And say, go ahead, when she gets home from work and she says, why isn't the laundry done, you say, honey, I'm going to do it at 10 o'clock tonight, because that's the better time to do it. And guess what? Instead of watching TV in the middle of the day, I went for a jog. Can you imagine how happy she's going to be? Simple things like that, you can have fun, you know, conserving energy, you can get some kudos from people who are asking you to do things and do it right. Those are the kinds of things that we need to do, but this is really a life and death issue when we have blackouts. We're not at a threat of it in Los Angeles, we have an opportunity to help everyone else, not only in California, but throughout the western United States, and if we conserve energy, we can actually save lives in doing it. So I hope we do that together, and we help the rest of the community, and that we continue to be good neighbors for the rest of California and the rest of the western United States.
Mr. Labonge, I sense a motion coming along, though. Whenever the temperature reaches 100 degrees-
Take your jacket off. But I want to salute-
We go business casual.
...our Chair of Commerce and Energy and Natural Resources in the way it is true, but it also, I just want to follow up on one thing, it goes to the people who came before us to develop a municipal power service, the Department of Water and Power, and goes to the council that sat here before us that fought to keep it, a municipal power, goes to state representatives like yourself, and our mayor who helped fight to keep it independent when they tried to combine it all.
Thank you. As you can see, Tom Labonge, not only is he cooler, taking off the jacket, he looks cool. So being cool is as much a state of mind as it is anything else. So, L.A., be cool, let's help conserve energy, look like Mr. Tom Labonge, take your jacket off, throw it over your shoulder, and look cool while you're at it.
Thank you.
Other announcements? Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dionne, stand up. Dionne does such a good job for us on a day-to-day basis, he almost blends into the woodwork sometime, but his family is here, visiting from North Carolina. Mike and Ann O'Connell, would you stand up?
Mr. Rosendahl? Did you have an announcement today?
No.
Okay. Other announcements, colleagues? If there's no other announcements, would you all please rise for adjourned tributes? Adjourned motions? Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, the irony of ironies and serendipity of life in general, to announce the passing of Jean O'Leary, who was a nun who turned a lesbian activist and organized the first White House meeting of homosexual leaders and helped create the National Coming Out Day, has died. She was 57. O'Leary died of complications of lung cancer at the home of her partner of 12 years, Lisa Phelps, Phillips. She was diagnosed with cancer in September of 2003. For three decades, O'Leary was active in feminist, lesbian, and democratic circles, worked for laws prohibiting discrimination against homosexuals and those with AIDS. O'Leary did organize the first White House meetings of gays and lesbian leaders, which was held in March of 1977. A memorial service is being planned this Sunday at 3 p.m. at the Los Angeles Gay and Lesbian Community Service Center. May she rest in peace.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll ask to ask the council adjourn in the memory of Ralph Blackwood. Ralph Blackwood was a very nice gentleman who lived in the Granada Hills area, 85 years old, veteran of World War II, well-known and loved by his neighbors, and everyone told me, and I met with some of his neighbors recently, that he's just a wonderful man in the community, he used to walk around and pick up trash and wander around. He used to have a problem sleeping, so he had a habit of walking at night, and that was probably what killed him, because he was hit by a car late in the evening, last Saturday evening, by a hit-and-run driver who obviously didn't stop to give aid, and he laid there for many hours and probably died because no one gave him assistance and because the driver took off and ran. So we want to adjourn in Mr. Blackwood's memory. We also know that the LAPD is seeking information leading to the arrest and conviction of the person who is known to have driven a 1994 through 2001 Dodge red pickup truck, left the scene, there is damage to the front of the vehicle. We issued a motion yesterday, which we'll vote on next week, a reward motion, the police department needs assistance in finding the person that perpetrated this cowardly deed, and so we want to adjourn in Mr. Blackwood's memory. He was a fine gentleman, may he rest in peace.
Mr. Zein.
Mr. President, colleagues, I have two adjourned motions. First is Jack Rappelson, passed away June 17th, resident of West Hills, born in Bronx, New York. He was 78 years of age, retired engineer for Hughes Aircraft. He was formerly chief administrator of BASE Adult Spanish Education, BASE, since his wife, Virginia, founded the organization in 1987. For 18 years, Jack devoted himself unselfishly to the interests of education and the well-being of his community. He was quiet and modest, had a passion for football, whether it was professional or college football. His integrity, dedication, and kind spirit will be greatly missed by all who had the privilege of knowing him. He survived by his wife, Virginia, daughter Diane, two sons Byron and Keith, stepdaughters and seven grandchildren. May Jack Rappelson rest in peace. The second motion is for Leo J. Summer, passed away July 4th, born in Kansas City, Missouri, in 1918, married to Violet in 1949, Glendale, California. After wedding, they lived in North Hollywood, in 1958, they moved to Canoga Park. Leo managed Glendale Federal Savings in Glendale and retired from the bank in 1982. An extremely active person in the Canoga Park community, was an active member of the Kiwanis Club of Canoga Park for 33 years, was responsible for the Kiwanis receiving their charter, also a past board member and president of the Canoga Park Chamber of Commerce and a member of the Elks Club for 19 years. As a young boy, Leo loved golf, playing baseball and fishing with his brothers at the town, a local town river in Kansas. He was a great man, will be truly missed by his family and friends. Leo J. Summer survived by his wife Violet, daughter-in-law Claudia Summer Schaefer, and numerous other family members. May Leo J. Summer rest in peace.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll have more on Tuesday, but we were informed that Virginia Sherrone, a longtime Hollywood activist and institution, somebody who really brought and fought, brought back Hollywood and fought for Hollywood for so many years, and a friend of mine, a friend of council members for quite a few decades, passed away two days ago. Our thoughts are with her family. She was just literally, when you look in each one of our communities, that one person, she was in her late 80s, I believe, who started the fight way back when and knew everybody and saw the people come and go and never wavered. She was that for Hollywood, and she will be dearly, dearly missed.
Mr. Labonge.
Just to add to that, Los, just north of the 4th district is the 13th, and Virginia Sherrone was very involved and well in the neighborhood around the Long Creek Park, and I remember first meeting her, Eric, when I worked for Peggy Stevenson in 1976, and has always been there, and in fact, was here as recently as a year ago, when we talked about issues like the vehicle forfeiture, because she was a leader in trying to reclaim neighborhoods of the problem of urban vice and other things on Sunset Boulevard, and she helped fight that and came up with some concepts and ideas years ago. She was a very tremendous woman, who was a great beacon for her neighborhood.
Other tributes? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much, this meeting is adjourned.